All right, good evening, this is July 26th meeting, this is only for appeals. We have two adjournments to announce, first off, appeal number 2018-36 Riverhead Dodge. They have some more issues to take care of, so they're gonna leave that adjournment open. So, what's, uh...
Some move us chairman?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, that's an open adjournment. Next one is appeal number 2018-37, 801F Realty Corp., on Main Street, Jamesport. They're asking for adjournment to 823, do I hear motion?
Some move us chairman?
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, held over appeal number 2018-22, Overlook Drive. Does anyone else has anything else to add to this? I think we've taken enough testimony to write a book. Anything new? Sure, step up, just state your name and your address.
Capitolas, Chris Koshignano, Sonwood Koshignano P L L C., 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Uniondale, New York. 11553. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity. Just to update you briefly, um, my clients have undertaken two things to hopefully assist in the process. They've hired a surveyor of their own to review the applicant's survey. There are a few things, as laypeople, we found when we looked at the application. It appears to be an updated survey, but it's got some outdated information, some references, owners' names that are incorrect on adjoining properties. There's also some incorrect references on, with regard to Overlook Drive and where it begins, where it ends, and who has access over it. So, it's a little bit confusing. It indicates that there's some form of D E C approval on the survey itself, but we haven't seen any form of D E C approval whatsoever. It also shows a 53-foot D E C buffer, but we believe 75-foot is the required distance. So, we've undertaken to have our own surveyor review it. That surveyor couldn't complete the mission by this evening. Also, I have a correspondence from our appraiser. We've hired an appraiser, Bert Nelson Associates. I think they've been surveying for over 50 years. And if I could hand that up...
Sure, please.
Uh, there's a reference on it that they were hired on July 23rd directly by my client, thank you. And they needed 30 to 45 days to complete the appraisal to determine what the actual value of the applicant's property is.
Do you think August 31st would be enough time?
I think whatever you're kind enough to let us have to get this information to you. And then, very briefly...
I just wanna know how appraisals work relevant to...
If the taking issue does present itself on the value of the property, we've offered a number to purchase the property. If the appraiser comes out higher, appraisal comes out higher, I think my client would be willing to pay more for the property. The applicant, and one of our most salient points is, the applicant has not brought any professionals at all throughout this, our fourth meeting. And we're sitting here having to do the legwork. I think we've raised a lot of issues. There's no professionals presenting on the application, but we're going to the extent of providing our own professional information. And then, just the last point is, over the course of the last four meetings, we feel like we've pointed out three or four potential flaws. And I think the most important being that the property and any structures on the property would be within 300 feet of the title wetland. And we believe they should have made application to your town planning board for town conservation advisory council approval or advisory opinion before proceeding forward. So, just for the record, I wanna request that if there isn't adjournment granted, that maybe we take the opportunity and let the building department have another look at the application because we think there may be variances that haven't yet made their way here. And that's been an argument we've kinda put forward before. And not trying to be contentious in any way, shape, or form. I think it's an uphill battle, even if you approve this case, that this property be developed. But I just wanna get the whole thing on the table.
Absolutely.
And apologize for taking up your time, but...
Stop, that's fine.
We really appreciate the fact that you gave us this opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hocker?
We don't know the same old issue. Hi guys, good evening again. One of the issues the attorney just brought up had to do with the planning board. And coincidentally, I spoke to a planning board member today because I was a little confused. And he told me the planning board has no jurisdiction over something like this. It's the site plan and subdivision. So, I don't know if you fellows are...
Well, I'm aware of it, Mr. Hocker, but the ordinance, what was normally called Chapter 12, they are the planning administrators of the code. But now, it's Chapter 219 of the town code, which has been changed. You have to make an application to them during this whole process to deal with the, to deal with those issues that they are in charge of.
That's after, not before.
It doesn't matter to us, you know, you're here for a variance only.
Right.
Whatever the building inspector requires you to do in the future with an updated survey or whatever datum he needs to establish the building permit to issue, he's gonna send you a letter, he's gonna tell you in a pointed way what other additional things you need to get a building permit. So, let's say we gave you the variance, there's other steps that need to be taken.
I understand that.
D E C application, planning board application, which are all available in the building department.
Right.
So...
I understand that.
I think we've established that it is a, um, a single and separate lot. And I don't think there's any dispute of that. But there's other issues that may be involved such as D E C, letters of jurisdiction setbacks, that kinda thing. All those things have to be dealt with, but eventually, we're gonna vote on this pretty soon.
I would hope it's tonight, I mean, the, uh...
No.
No, we're not gonna do it tonight, but it's gonna be soon.
All right.
It's just seems like...
So, what we're gonna do is gonna close this issue. We're not gonna take any more testimony except by written, anything written, people want, uh...
Written comment.
Written comment they want, uh, put in until August 31st. What we need from you is, we need you to submit certified copies of all the deeds in the chain of the title to establish this case for you.
Certified copies of deeds, the deed I turned in is not sufficient?
It's not certified.
Not certified.
Again, this is not an easy process.
You go to the county clerk's office and they'll certify.
As far as an appraisal goes, if I don't intend to sell a lot, what do I need with an appraisal?
The appraisal is irrelevant to me personally, I don't know how the other board members feel.
I don't either.
That's between you and the Hocker, the actual...
Right, exactly, exactly. So, again, the delaying is working well. So, what else, just clarify, all I need is a certified copy of the deed, is that what's...
That's what we've been advised that we should ask you for. Certified copies of the deeds, the chain of title.
The title report was not good enough?
I can't say it is or isn't, that's...
It's a certified title report, I mean, where do I go?
Take it up with the town attorney. All I'm telling you is that we're asking you for it.
All right, will I get...
I would get 'em.
Right.
It closes August 31st, and then we're gonna give a reserve decision, and we're done. And then you move on to the next phase.
All right, so can I just get any information I need by going and talking to Clarissa, just so I'm clear on what I need?
Certified copies of the deeds.
Certified copies of the deeds.
Once that you submit it.
What about the survey, they brought up something about the survey. The survey was recently done by Ken Wojcik.
I understand that, but that's up to the building inspector when he takes your application. And if we grant you a variance, you're gonna have to make applications to the D E C, the building department, and to the planning board. They will decide whether or not those, that survey is sufficient or not, not us.
Right.
That's all.
But that's not gonna hold me up from, on August 31st.
It may, you might be pushed back a little by the D E C or pushed forward by the C A C, I don't know where you're gonna go. But based on your submission, what you're asking for is what we're gonna grant you or not grant you that decision. You asked for setbacks, you presented this survey.
Right.
If we decide to vote for it or we decide to vote against it.
Right.
It makes no difference. The survey issues that they raise, they can raise with the building inspector if we approve for...
Right, right, that's the next step.
That's in your mind the next step.
Right. And the D E C is another step.
That's a big one.
I am aware of that, again, but what comes first, the chicken or the egg? The Board of Appeals comes first. The Board of Appeals comes first.
In your mind, it does, yes.
Good, uh, we have something else for you to...
Yeah, Mr. Barnes mentioned the single and separate, I guess that's been established, it's not a question. Our town attorney has gone over whatever was submitted by you, the deeds, and according to them, she feels that you have access to Overlook Drive. And that, I'm just reading that because that's what she gave us.
I know, I turned in to Clarissa 12 pages of documents today relating to deeds going back to the 40s. Every one of them says right-of-way. Mr. Capitolas' deed says it's a right-of-way, so there's no having to ask permission to get to my lot.
We're not disputing that, but we just want certified deeds to the file for the record.
I mean, just, I wanted to deal with, that I had to deal with. So, also, did you see that nice little letter, my neighbor's in support of my application? Okay, thanks a million. Anything else?
That should do it.
Okay.
Counsel, if you have anything else?
Yeah, just one point of clarification.
Sure.
So, I cited the title wetland information. It happens to be Section 295-4 that this property is required to have a planning board application. And then, in 295-6, it says that that has to be done when the building permit application is originally made. And I don't believe that has been done. Also, Mr. Hocker did say at the original hearing that he had a D E C permit already, he said it on the record, and we have not seen anything. So, we believe that with the 53-foot measurement on the survey, it's gonna have to be changed by 22 feet to accommodate the 75-foot D E C buffer. And the proposed house is gonna be in the middle of Overlook right-of-way, but we'll see, I guess.
The 75 feet is jurisdictional.
Yeah.
That's what it means. It's in their jurisdiction. His property's in the jurisdiction of the D E C. Whatever he presents to them, they'll figure it out.
But we were told that it was already done, and on the survey, it references permit number...
There may be confusion as to maybe a prior application.
Yes.
From years ago.
Yes.
It looks like it was in the 80s.
That's why we're checking the survey.
Some people think that permit's still good. It's not still good. I recognize that, I know that. That doesn't mean he can't reapply, and that's what he needs to do. Because we'll change, because this property may have to be flagged again, I don't know.
We do understand and appreciate that, even if you grant the dimensional variances, it's only the tip of the iceberg.
Correct.
We do understand it.
That's exactly what we're talking about, yeah.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Not our scope.
All right, so we're gonna close the hearing for public comment and leave it open for any written comment through August 31st. Do I hear motion?
Some move us chairman?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and thanks everyone for their time and effort. All right. Held over appeal number 2018-35, Eric Thompson.
Do you have the plans to hand out?
I think Leroy does.
No, you got an extra side note.
Oh. Leroy, you wanna pick this?
Sure.
Yeah, you've been sworn in before, just state your name and your address.
Eric Thompson, 936 East Main Street, Riverhead, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Thompson, how are you?
Good evening.
Thank you for submitting those plans to us. They're very well done, it's very well thought out. There's a couple things that I thought I would mention to you.
Okay.
I think we all agree that we can vote on it tonight. We are gonna put a condition on it that the upstairs is gonna be, to be maintained as storage.
Correct.
And not habitable space in any way.
Correct.
Okay. And, what else? I'm still not sure what to do about the meter, but it's not, you really should talk to the building inspector about that second meter.
The second meter, okay. Look, it's just been there since I bought the property.
I get it.
And to be honest, I was getting ready to call the power company because it's half hanging off the pole. So, I gotta talk to them and see what we're gonna do.
They're gonna tell you to go to the town, because the town has the authority to issue the certificate to deal with that meter.
Okay.
So, I would check with the building inspector or electrical inspector, Mr. Griffin.
Okay.
And see what he would like to do. So, you got this meter, I'm putting this addition on, the garage, where do you want me to go?
To be honest with you, I'm just worried I'm not gonna have enough power coming in through the new 200 amp service that I put in to my house with that and the extra power for the garage and the pool. So, that was the only reason I was actually considering, because it was there. I would never go through the expense to put it in already.
I got it.
But since it's there already, it seemed foolish not to utilize it.
Let me just give you a little piece of advice. If the building inspector says, if you wanna use that power, second power, you may have to get a variance for that.
Okay.
So, what I'm suggesting is that, I don't know if you guys are gonna like this, but to leave this open until you discuss it with them. And we can vote on it on the next meeting, if not, we could add it to it.
How much service do you have now, sir?
I have a 200 amp service.
And your proposed garage, are you gonna have a lot of electrical equipment or...
I'm a stoneworker and wood craftsman, so some, you know, power tools and stuff. And I'm just worried that I'm gonna be drawing a lot of power through the one panel. And I've got a whole extra line all the way out to the garage anyway. So, it's actually closer to come from the meter to go to the new pole than it is to pull it through from the house.
You know, I could tell you this, that the zoning board can grant you a variance tonight, and we can reopen the hearing if you need that to be heard.
That would be very good, because I'd really like to try to...
Let's do it. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Bingo.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Thompson, I move that the appeal of Eric Thompson of 936 East Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number 60127615, which is in the R A 40 zoning, for variances from Chapter 301, Section 9A1C, where proposed detached garage is 15.9 feet from the side property line and the minimum required is 20 feet. And Section 11, where the proposed impervious surface is 36.5 percent of the total lot area and the maximum permitted is 15 percent. And where the proposed addition has a side yard setback of 9.1 feet and the minimum required is 25 feet, be approved with the condition that the storage area above is not to be converted to habitable space in accordance with applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed by the building inspector.
Second.
All right. Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so, if you have any other problems with this, you know, come back to us, we can always reopen it.
Okay.
So, what's the building inspector?
Yeah, I'm just gonna check on that extra meter and see what direction I'm gonna head with that, so...
Okay.
I'll do that this week and I'll get right on top of it.
You can leave this open, we can reopen it before you receive the C O after construction.
Okay.
So, you have plenty of time to do it.
Okay, excellent, okay.
If you want that to be an option down the road, use it. If not...
I'm just trying to get the foundations in before the weather starts.
We're with you.
Enjoy.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
You got it.
Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Take your care.
Okay, that takes care of that.
All right. All right, held over appeal number 2018-26, Old Steeple Church. Good evening, did we swear you in last time?
Excuse me?
Did we swear you in last time?
No. We swear it out of it. No.
Did you swear to tell the truth about the truth of the law?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Keith Young, 985 Formview Road, Mattock, New York.
We have the floor, tell us what you want.
Okay, I think it's a relatively simple matter. We had a sign application where we had an internally illuminated, a proposed internally illuminated sign, where we, you know, it's basically a letter board where you put letters on it. It just had an internal illumination feature, so that was immediately denied. So, the church and the board had gone through significant planning and, you know, volunteer work getting this done before we learned that it was, it wouldn't be allowed. So, we just decided to try to seek a variance to see if we can actually get this thing through. So, that's basically, I think, you know, where we're at. We'd like this sign to be approved, and like I said, we, you know, the board did some significant planning here. We weren't aware of the, you know, regulation concerning the internal illumination. We think that the sign is pretty conservative, not very loud or offensive, you know, even though it might have the internal illuminated box. So, I think that's where we're at, we're just seeking some relief from that requirement. Just before I go into any other lengthy explanation, just met with the A R B yesterday, and they pretty much said they would definitively not recommend this to be approved. You know, I'm assuming that you guys have that information.
We do.
So, I don't wanna get into any long explanations or anything like that if, you know, if that's gonna rule. And you guys always take their recommendation, so...
Is there any reason why you would not adhere to their recommendation?
Well, like I said, we just, we really wanted to go with this sign, with this design. You know, we have a bunch of volunteers over there, put in a lot of work just designing this project. So, we wanted to see if we could get it through, as is, before we go back to the drawing board and everybody's gotta put in more time. Gotta go back to the sign, you know, designer and everything, so...
Well, I believe the Lutherans have one, it's just down the road from you, if I'm not mistaken.
I think they do, yes. Anne Aquabogue?
Do you have four rows of letters on it, right? You could have four rows, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this sign, this almost looks like it's the same size as the existing sign, which is not, is that correct?
It is, as far as the letter box where the four rows of letters are, that's exactly, pretty much the same size. The thing that's different about this sign is that there's two carved signs, one at the top and one at the bottom. I think the top, you know, says Old Steeple Church on there, the bottom says something else. So, that's, that makes it a little bit larger, but as far as the box with the letters on it, it's the same size as the existing sign.
Any other board members have anything to say? Anyone else out, in the audience have anything to comment, any comments? Why am I named?
Hit it, Adam.
Remove that the appeal of Old Steeple Church, 656 Main Road, Aquabogue. Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-67-1-25.1-VC zoning for variance and early from Chapter 301, Section 254 F1, where the proposed replacement freestanding sign is internally illuminated, which is not permitted. Be granted in courts for the applications, sketches, amended to, and file with the building department.
Second.
All right, we got a couple seconds, so, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Name?
I vote aye. So, your appeal has been granted, and two weeks from now, go to the building department, you should be able to continue on paperwork from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Have a good night.
All right, I think it's your turn now, there young lady.
Appeal number 2018-38, Marion Villa Vicencia, 111 Suisse Avenue, Riverhead. Tax map number 600-128283. I see zoning for variances and early from Chapter 301, Section 222E, where the proposed addition is 2.1 feet from the property line and the minimum required is 30 feet.
Do we have the applicant or somebody representing the applicant? Will you step up? Now, you have your mailings there and your receipts and all that stuff, or you already handles it?
Excuse me?
Did you have, you have your mailings? You get your receipts from the mail? Oh, you already got those, okay, great. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth of the law.
Yes.
Kindly state your name and your address, and just pull that microphone down a little bit.
Marion Villa Vicencia, 111 Suisse Avenue, Riverhead, New York, 11901.
All right there, young lady, please, what do you wanna, what do you wanna do?
Yes, uh, my husband and I, we want to add, like, and, we don't have enough space inside of the house, so we want to do like an addition to the, you know, like, to put stuff on, like, um, you know, space for, our houses don't have a garage, so we want to do like a space for putting stuff on it, like tools or something. But the addition, it's close to the property line. That's the only way, you know, we can do an addition to the house. We don't have another, you know, another place to do an addition, just, you know, that way.
What if you go backwards, go west? That's a big lot, is that the lot that goes all the way out to Maine, West Maine, and then back to Suisse?
Yes, it is.
How many rooms are in the house right now, ma'am?
It's four.
That big structure only has four rooms in it?
Yes, it's only four rooms and two bathrooms, living room, kitchen.
And how many people live there?
We are, uh, my husband and I, two kids, my nephew, and a niece.
Okay.
Do you have a contractor that's gonna do the work for you, or you're gonna do it yourself?
My husband is doing all the work.
Yes, has he submitted construction plans to the building department?
Yeah, he did.
He did?
Yeah, yes, uh, we hire architects to do the plans.
Okay, who was the architect, do you remember?
His name is Lopez.
Lopez?
Oh, it's Lopez, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a house plan?
It must be on Lopez.
Anyway, is there a house plan in your backyard?
No, there's no plans, I think he's, he's planned, honestly. Do you think you could ask Mr. Lopez, the architect, to provide a copy to us?
Yeah, I can do that.
By email?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
That would help us out making the decision.
Clarissa, does she have your email address?
I have it, uh, I think I have it here. It's on the letter. Yeah, it's on the letter.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So, we wanna look at the plans and see how it conforms with the neighborhood, that's all. All right?
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so it's the first step, we'll just see what you can do. Okay, so it's your first step, we'll just see what you can do.
So we're gonna-
Yeah. Plus, adjourn it to the next meeting, which is?
August, August ninth?
August ninth, okay.
Okay.
Is, is August ninth enough time for you, or do you want the twenty-third?
It's fine.
Okay, good.
I, I moved that the appeal of Miriam Villa Vicentia, uh, one eleven Suisse Avenue, Riverhead, for variances and early from chapter three oh one, section two twenty-two E, where proposed addition is two point one feet from the property line, and the minimum required is thirty feet. Be adjourned to August ninth, two thousand and two.
Second.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So get that paperwork to us, and, uh, we'll try and get something going for you in the next meeting, let's see what, see what we can do, both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appeal number two thousand eighteen thirty-nine, Marion Solaki, one eighty Creek Road, Rainy River, tax map number six hundred twenty-nine one thirty-three, RDV zoning. For variances and early from chapter three oh one, section two nineteen dash fourteen A, where proposed addition represents development in a restricted bluff area, and additions to buildings within fifty feet of the top of the bluff are prohibited. Section twenty-nine A one B, where proposed accessory deck addition is in the front yard and three point seven seven feet from the side property line, and accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard, and minimum setback to the property line required is twenty feet. Section twenty-nine A one C, where wooden boardwalk constructed in the rear yard is seven point seven feet from the side property line, and minimum required is twenty feet. Section thirty-one, where proposed combined side yard is seventeen point six feet, and minimum required is forty-five feet. And section two twenty-two E, where proposed first and second story additions increase, increase gross floor area within the required front and side yards, representing an increase in degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling, which is not permitted.
Okay.
You have to activate the-
May I pass it out?
Oh, sure, please, just give it to Clarissa. She'll pass it out, thank you. And just go up to the microphone, we'll swear you in, and off we go. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, self help, you got it?
I do.
Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Matthew Crane, I live at four twenty Grove Avenue in Patchoff. I'm a registered land surveyor, representative of Dr. Alahi, who's here today. I'm also here with Jason Merkel from our office at Hawkins Web Jager, who's a registered architect. We compared the, the land survey, these, uh, permit plans and the architectural plans for what we're presenting tonight. On the surface of it, the number of area variances are considerable. However, much of the relief required also stems from the pre-existing nature of the lot and the dwelling within the current B eighty zoning. We're also within fifty feet of a top of bluff or slope in a shorefront environment, where much of the residences are currently built into the primary dune line, as it stands now. In comparison to the B eighty requirements, we have only twenty-nine percent of the required one hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage with our fifty-foot wide lot. With such a narrow lot, the side yards are impossible to maintain with any structure more than five feet wide. However, if a proportional approach is taken to the proposed side yards, then the minimum of seven point six seven feet, at thirty-eight percent, and the total of seventeen point five nine feet, at thirty-nine percent, are not inconsistent with the possibilities of fifty-foot wide lot when comparing that reduced lot with the required one hundred and seventy-five feet on a quota basis. The same consideration is requested for the wooden boardwalk, which is seven point seven feet from the eastward boundary, uh, is, is comparable. And the wooden boardwalk is basically wood just laid down on the ground. The front and side yard deck extensions are necessary to facilitate exterior travel around the residence, and our narrow extensions being only three point seven feet wide, three point seven five feet wide, pare down to the narrowest width feasible to minimize the relief required. The increase in floor spaces going from an existing fourteen fifty-seven square feet to a total of two thousand three hundred and forty-five square feet, including the basement. This increase in nonconformity requires relief, even though the final result is still a reasonably sized house. In considering approving this application, we feel that no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variances. Many of the dwellings on Creek Road are in fifty-foot wide lots with two-story dwellings, and of the eighteen developed lots within five hundred feet of subject, nine, or half of them, are in lots fifty feet wide or less. Many are two-story dwellings of comparable or larger size. Additionally, these same residences have both primary and accessory structures closer to the front property line than we have, uh, after completion. And if I may just submit a GIS photograph, which I'm sure most people consult, they, uh, as you know, on the GIS sometimes the boundary lines are skidded a little bit, but in this case, it kinda serves a purpose. I, I highlighted twenty eighty Creek Road here, and you can see the erroneous skewed property lines they show on the GIS. It actually passes through the front of the building, and I found it very instructional when you look at the, the other structures, uh, right and left, uh, being considerably front, in fact, a detached garage completely in front of that dead line. Uh, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by other, some other feasible method. We are already in a, in a serious pre-existing nonconforming situation, so any construction will require relief. While substantial in nature, the relief sought is not inconsistent with existing conditions of the neighborhood. It should be noted that none of the existing properties on Creek Road meet the B eighty residential standards, not one. The application will not have an adverse effect on the environmental conditions of the district, and the construction will commence employing modern accepted erosion control and mitigation measures as required. It's somewhat complicated, I think, when you see that, that the houses there are all built into what's really the last dune line after Sandy. There was a substantial loss to the beach after that, and, uh, moving it further back and disturbing that dune line, I think would have much more of a, an environmental hazard. And while at least partially self-created by the desire to improve his residence, the prevailing zoning creates a need for relief by its very nature. For these reasons, we believe that this application is worthy of the relief request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I wanna get the guy to cut up these lots at fifty feet, that's what I want.
Sorry, sir?
I wanna get the guy to cut up these lots at fifty feet.
Exactly. I think it was very long time.
Yeah, you can stay back there. Yeah, we, we, we have a lot of this.
Okay.
Leroy?
How many additional square feet you added?
The tot- well, the total additional square feet is just over a thousand. I think I detailed it on the site plan.
Yeah. On the left side.
One fifty-four and seven thirty-four.
Cause I handed them all out to you.
Right, we have it. Eight eighty-eight.
So the, the first floor is a thousand and eighty-four.
Daddy, don't you have to take one back?
Sure. I got one.
So your second floor addition is seven thirty-five. So-
We're adding a hundred fifty-four square feet. The first floor, just kinda squaring off a portion of the first floor. Then adding a second floor addition of seven hundred and thirty-four square feet, and, uh-
In addition to, what is the original top floor?
The original is-
Yeah.
One thousand four hundred and fifty-seven, counting the basement.
But what I'm meaning is, if you have a second floor addition, what is the current- What's the current square footage of the second floor? Zero? Oh, because they're calling it a two-story residence. I know it's a block plane, but it should say proposed, second story.
True.
It, it's leading me to believe that there's a second story already.
It says on the-
And you're calling it a second floor addition, so-
I'll tell you what, let me, let me trade you, is that a certified copy, or did I see some stamp on that one?
On the left of the point, it's got proposed second floor.
I, I see it all, just putting it on the record.
Cause I have a land survey all the way.
Because this, this will be DEC down the road, okay?
Okay.
So, alright, so-
You can stay right here, too.
The mic's working.
So altogether, you're gonna add seven hundred and thirty-four square feet on the second floor.
We're gonna add another floor above, which is gonna total seven hundred and thirty-four square feet.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record, thank you.
You wanna stay here, you can, if you have to. Let's make it easier for you.
Is there anybody else to be heard?
I don't see very much of the character of the neighborhood.
It's definitely not outside the character of the neighborhood, but you got a letter from the DEC talking about endangered species.
Yeah.
What are they gonna do with that?
Yeah, I don't think they're taking refuge in this area. Especially looking at this map here.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's in the same-
Yeah.
I, I, I really don't see anything I can do, so.
Well, it's a little complex, because we're dealing with DEC as well.
Right.
So a little more thought has to be put into it before we can grant it.
Okay.
So, I think we should, that's my opinion. We should, uh, adjourn it, or close the hearing, take written comments, and then have a reserve decision.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Alright, why don't we do that?
Cause it has to be very carefully written.
Yeah. Why don't we do, why don't we do it that way? We'll reserve decision, and give it at the next meeting. Let, let's just get all, everything in order.
I would actually do it at the twenty-third meeting, cause there's a little, a little more research has to be done, I think on-
Okay, I'll, I'll take it here.
Strong's behalf.
Yeah.
You know, she needs a little time to-
Alright, so let's make it the twenty-third of August.
Yeah.
And then we'll, uh-
We'll close the hearing and make-
We're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision on the twenty-third of August.
So you wanna leave it up to any comments, though, written comments?
Yeah, written comments until that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um-
You have anything to say?
No, so we're, we're gonna leave it all, we're gonna adjourn it, or no, we're gonna reserve decision.
Reserve decision, we're gonna leave it open for written comments until-
August twenty-third.
Yeah, so we're closing.
Alright, so Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal number eighteen dash zero three nine, Mr. Alahi, be closed.
Excuse me, before we hit it, is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Nobody, okay.
We're gonna have a reserve decision on August twenty-third, and we are gonna leave it open for written comments until, when?
August twenty-third?
August twenty-third. August twenty-third also.
Very second.
Second.
Alright, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we'll see you folks on the twenty-third, and hopefully we can write the decision and get you guys going.
Okay.
Thanks very much for your time. Nice presentation. Well, we have to, do I hear a motion to accept the, the minutes of the last meeting?
Shall move, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
You're hearing a motion.